...to have meet the candidates. Barbara assured me that the calendar had no more formals and that she's only had two rentals tonight. So I want to make sure that gets into the public record that we did not bump anybody from that night, so.
Somebody telling stories?
Who loves that volunteer page?
Got it Bob? Thank you.
One of these?
No, yeah.
I got four of them.
She laid it there and I was supposed to distribute them and I didn't.
She doesn't come to the meeting. Yeah, but he doesn't know about the calendar.
Yeah, I made a copy of that calendar.
Barbara's the only one that... She's home, but she doesn't come to the meeting. She won't answer.
What's up Tim? Sleeping? Taking a nap? You?
Me?
Call meeting order seven o'clock to sign you the pledge. Pleasure agents to the twilight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do roll call. Ben Hubb?
Here.
Dan Van Buren?
Here.
Jeff Corpinny?
Here.
Who are the guest speakers tonight? Correspondents? There's a couple things. You have anything to add?
Go ahead. I don't know if all of the trustees received a... Did you guys get that from the Department of Transportation about training, course flyer, quick clear training about on-site safety? Leave that with you guys. That was really all I had.
A couple things I had real quick was the road work we did this year is completed on Somerset Road, Dogwood Lakes. Thank everybody for their cooperation. Hope everything's going good out there. Seemed to go pretty smooth. Looked pretty good. Pretty had worth it. Another thing I had was Licking County is hosting a couple small events. One of them's down here by Hope Elementary, County Line Road. They're gonna put up a new Licking County welcome sign and there's dates and times on here. I'll leave this. And then that evening, they're going to do a small presentation on the history of the area, the National Road, Gray Shop, Brownsville. So I'll leave this up there if anybody wants to see it. That's all.
I attended the Licking County Township Association meeting and they gave each township yearly reports, different things like that, either tonight or tomorrow. Hang some of the stuff on the wall there, different... Different maps of the township, CAUV parcels and that type of thing. Their Licking County Plan Commission, this month there wasn't anything pertinent to our township at their meeting. I went to the courthouse to get all the documents on the CMI Waste versus Holy Green Township Trustees. If anyone wants that number, it's KCV. Well, actually, it starts with 2013, CB01011. And the last thing is the Board of Elections contacted me. The delivery time for the machines is Saturday, November 2nd at 10:00 a.m. I'll make sure I leave this with Barbara because I know she's the one that's unlocking the building for that. And that's it for correspondence for me.
Is there any under safety? Jack, is anything good? Fire companies, next month, we're gonna invite all the fire departments in to review and sign contracts for fire protection EMS services. That'll be next meeting, we'll have the fire departments here. zoning?
Ah, yes. You have a copy of my report. Per conversation with prosecuting attorney, September... Let me go through it. Per conversation with Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Amy Brown Thompson, I was in her office and a fire email regarding aerial photos needed to upgrade the files, upgrade files for violations which have been turned over to the prosecuting attorney's office. I am requesting the aerial photos that I brought up before, so I'm requesting that we, zoning can get aerial photos. So I need a vote on that. I would also like to send the violation for address 16246 Laurel Hill to the prosecuting attorneys, which I need a vote on that. That violation was submitted one year ago. They got a variance. They requested a variance, it was approved in February. Still no lot split has been produced. The prosecuting attorney stated it's time to do something. So I need to bring it to the table and have it voted on to send that to the prosecuting attorney as well.
All right, we'll talk about it one more time. The aerial photos, I also spoke with Amy. I spoke with Barbara, she kinda told me what they had requested, so I called the prosecutor's office and talked to them and...
Ken, hear you please.
Yeah, what exactly are they for also?
And she had stated that their office is requesting an updated aerial photo or photos of a couple different properties to move forward with some cases to see if any, you know, anything has been done with these properties. So I told her I'd bring it to the meeting. And like I said, they're requesting it from us, so to move forward with these violations. I'd like to make a motion that we have another set of aerial photos done of the two addresses, Barbara?
Yes.
Two addresses. Do you remember what they cost before? Do you guys remember what they were?
It's like eighty dollars.
I think that's what it was.
It was around eighty. Might've gone up because of gas prices and everything. But the estimate was eighty. Up last year.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and have another set of aerial photos done for these properties, not to exceed... Eighty dollars in cost?
Well, if it was eighty last year, you know it's gonna go up a little because of gas prices.
What do you think?
Ben? What exactly are the violations that we have to have recast of aerial footage of?
It's for zoning violations, has to do with junkyards and stuff like that, that they want aerial photos where they can match them up to look and see if stuff has been moved, hasn't been moved. They've had sufficient time to move stuff, so...
Can't they just do that by pictures?
That's what we're doing, getting pictures.
Well, I mean, other than aerial?
We've taken pictures too, but they requested aerial photos from us too. The prosecuting attorney's office, yes. I'll make a motion that we get another set of aerial photos done for those couple properties, not to exceed a hundred dollars. Do you have the addresses? No?
14282 National Road, 16246 Laurel Hill Road.
How could you haven't talked to any of these people?
You can bring it up at the public comment.
I'll bring it up right now.
Bring it up, public comment, sir.
You're accusing us of something that don't exist.
All right.
Is there a second to the motion?
That's just to see if they're the same or...
Same change added or removed. If stuff has been removed, it's gonna benefit. If it has not, it's not gonna benefit them at all. They've got already a set from a year ago. Remember, we had it done a year... It's been a little bit more than a year. That's why she wants the updates.
What about everybody else? What about everybody else? What about the rest of the township?
If not, we'll move on.
The motion, point of order, Mr. President, the motion was made and seconded and I believe that we can have discussion now.
It hasn't been seconded.
If you're gonna...
Did you second it?
Not yet.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry Dan. If there's no second, then you're right, we move on.
All right, we'll move on.
Yeah, let's talk about them.
The second one is to...
I have a question. Dan just said, "Let's talk about it." The photos have to be taken when trees are down, it doesn't work when the leaves are down. If the leaves are up and can't see anything, it's a waste of your money and my time.
I know, but another month, all the leaves will be off.
Correct. The request was to have them taken in November.
You say request, like, I haven't been privy to any copies of anything from the prosecutor. You're saying the prosecutor's requested from us that we take pictures? So that's how you...
I spoke with her on the phone today.
Oh, today?
Yes. I spoke with her on the phone and I asked her what was going on and she said her office request that our board have more aerial photos taken of these properties.
Can she email Jenny or something, email you and let me have it on an email? You know, or do you have an email of it?
I have what she sent me in June. But I have to have this back, this is not public record. This is attorney confidentiality.
Is that something the trustees have been copied on or is this the first thing of us who's seen it?
This was sent to me from the prosecuting attorney.
About these two specific addresses?
These two specific addresses, you know what?
That's what I asked, okay.
I made copies of them because you've already done it.
This entire email is about these two properties that you mentioned? The one on National Road and one on Laurel Hill?
Okay, I'll second it then.
Now, do you wanna have discussion?
Well, if there is client confidential information, I think the board should be privy to it. Dan just saw it. I think we should be able to see all the facts on this. Because I think that's, we're supposed to be a board here.
But I want that back.
Is that copy machine set up now?
Yeah, we need to put the ink in it, but we can make a copy after the meeting.
I'd love to get a copy, so I can take a look at it.
Give it to her for now.
I'd like a copy this evening before we leave.
You can go back and copy now.
The ink things aren't even in there right now.
Then we have to wait to do that.
Or you want me to hold on to it? You want me to hold on to it?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
As long as you have it, because I want it back.
I'll make a copy after the meeting.
I'll contact Amy tomorrow. I'll get every piece of information that exists on this because before you can discuss anything, you have to have the information.
We just read it. And you heard it from Ben.
I didn't read it.
That was your choice, I handed it to you.
All right, we're gonna move on.
We got a motion and a second to the motion. I'm doing roll call on the motion.
If you don't mind, please read the motion so I know what you're voting on.
Ben made a motion for more aerial photos for two addresses to see if there have been improvements made. The photos were requested by prosecutor for 14282 National Road and 16246 Laurel Hill. Dan seconded the motion, roll call. Ben?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
All right, the next thing was to send a violation to the prosecuting attorney's office of a...
I guess I might have rewrote that up, wrote it incorrectly. She has everything because she, of course, guides me for the violations. She would like for the board to vote to bring it forward to prosecute. She already has all the records, it's time to prosecute.
For number two?
Yes.
For the 16,246.
Yes.
So she wants us to make a motion if we do choose so to proceed forward?
Yes.
That's just on what the...
The lot split.
No, there's a, Mr. Corpinny has the copies I gave him of the violations. There are two of them. He has them.
You're putting both these in the same motion, aren't you?
No, one's already been forwarded. It was already voted on. I'm only putting the 16246 Laurel Hill. The National Road is already in her hands.
That's what I'm saying, prosecutor wants to know if we want them to move forward with the 16,246 Laurel Hill.
To take it to the courts for their violation.
Has there been a lot split done?
Do you want me to tell you in private or tell you, does everybody have to know what's going on?
That's your choice.
Okay. I have had the people from the planning out, how many times, Bob? Five times maybe? We pulled out the culvert. We've made it look like there was no driveway.
I remember it.
We've done everything they ask us to do. They will not pass it until every blade of grass is perfect. And the last time they were just, how many times, how many days ago? Two days? Two days ago they came out? You know what they said? The ditch is not straight enough. The ditch is not straight enough. That's, that was what they said. I called them again today. I said, "I think the ditch is straight now, can't you want to come back out?" This is what I've been doing ever since we've been here.
Who told you that? Who came out, do you know?
Brad Mercer. He said the ditch wasn't straight enough. I just called back there again and emailed him, it's on my email on my phone. Can you come back out? I think the ditch is straight now. Culvert has to be pulled out, grass, all the gravel had to be scraped off the driveway, make it look like there was never a driveway, make the ditch straight. It's, they've been out there five times.
Yeah, there's one thing, I mean, why would they make you move that gravel or cover the gravel?
They made us do it.
You could gravel your whole yard if you wanted to.
Don't make sense.
They made us do it. They made us move all the gravel out of the driveway. I'm gonna get an attorney.
That don't make sense.
I'm about to get an attorney and I should...
You should.
I'm sick of it.
Do you know anything about that, Bob? Have you heard anything?
According to Planning Commission, nothing has been submitted. According to prosecuting attorney, when I talked to her, she said, "They got their variance in February, it's time to move on."
I can't do anything.
They have not, they have not kept in contact with me. I know nothing except for what I talked to with Planning Commission.
I can't do anything until they pass the ditch. You understand what I'm saying?
I understand.
Okay, you can ask Brad.
There's also more violations other than just that lot split.
When's the last time you talked with Brad? You said it was pretty recent?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? So you are working on this? You're trying to resolve it?
We've been trying, they've been out there five times. The gravel is, well, okay, this looks okay, you've got the driveway where it goes, you've got the driveway where it's supposed to be on survey, but you can't have this culvert in the ditch. Okay. So then we gotta pull the culvert out of the ditch, we gotta scrape all the gravel out of the driveway, call them back out again. The ditch is not straight enough. That's the last thing he said yesterday, was it yesterday's?
So that's all your way to sign off and then it'll be done?
Yes! I can't do nothing until the ditch is straight, every rock is out of the yard, we did, we made it look like grass.
Do you think it'll be done by next month?
I hope so, it's not my doing.
Mr. F, I have a question. Isn't Laurel Hill a county road?
Yes.
Doesn't the county maintain those ditches and the culverts?
They should maintain the ditches, I don't know what they're...
I don't know what the deal is. I don't know what the deal is on that.
Because I would think that that's their job, not their job.
So... But we were told it was our job and they told us it would come back out as soon as the ditch was great.
Well, things has changed a lot. I don't know what the county is doing in far as, far as any...
Maintenance.
Maintenance, because they're even changing on the culverts and stuff.
What's the woman's name that... Well, couldn't somebody find out exactly what the culvert conditions are and do something?
I wanna go in, I'll talk to them.
Why don't you get ahold of Brad Mercer, he knows all about it? And the woman, I can't think of her name, it's Kim, I can't remember her name, she came out, she said, "I'm going to ask them whether you have to pull that culvert out or not." So she'd been out a couple times. Then she came out, she said, "There's not 250 feet between this culvert and this culvert, you have to pull this culvert out."
Right.
"And you have to scrape all the gravel out of the driveway so far from the middle of the road back." I know all the rules. I can't do anything until they pass that ditch, can I tell you?
I mean, I know you're right on the 250 between the driveways, you know?
There's not 250 feet between the two culverts. So now, my guy that lives there has to drive up where we had to make the new driveway and drive across the front yard. Okay, this is the stupidest thing I've ever heard of. He can't go in the driveway anymore, he has to go in where the new driveway was and drive across the front yard and park it, you know, across the front yard, tear the yard up. This is what we had to do, so...
You wanna talk to them?
Yeah, I'd rather go in, I wanna go in and talk to Brad first.
I'm gonna table this.
Well, now, I have you realize also, it's not just the lot split, there are other violations. They were given a variance for the lot splits, they have to act on that. February is one year on that. But this other one was given to them, it's been a year. So there are other parts of this violation.
What can I do before they pass that? They told me I can't do anything before that.
This has nothing to do with the lot split that I'm talking to him on now.
Is this the third one now?
No, it's the same violation, they got a variance on part of their violation.
Does somebody wanna give me an idea?
Operating and maintaining a junkyard.
Where is that?
Is that motion on the floor?
You have gotten that violation. Yes, that's what we're discussing.
Okay, we had a man from the health department.
How many deeds they got out there? One or two or not?
Excuse me?
How many deeds they got? Just one?
I can't do anything.
That has to do with that.
Well, that's been going on now for a year.
That's not what I'm talking about. Talking about the rest of the violation. They got a variance on that part. They still haven't done anything for the rest of the violation.
That's not true. The health department, there's a guy from the health department that I have all kinds of paperwork from, who came out and checked everything back there and told me what was okay and what wasn't okay. He's already been there four or five times.
That's to Mr. Gundyberger, he'll tell you.
And I can't do anything with the deed until these guys pass the ditch now.
Right. So it's either we pass it all or none of it?
No, no. It's, the variance is separate because they've already requested a variance. Okay? They've got one year on that. Then I'll bring that back up because I have all the separate paperwork on that. But you've still got the operating and maintaining a junkyard. Nothing has been done to alter that.
That's the only thing the prosecutor wants aerial footage of.
Yes.
What back there is a junkyard? The only thing I ever had was a letter saying that we had to move our tractors, we couldn't have a sign, we couldn't have any machinery in our field, we couldn't have the car that has license tags and a title. Every, you guys all have that letter of what the violation is. All those things, I don't know why those have to be moved. Why do I have to move my tractors?
Don't forget about the mounds of scrap in their backyard and the...
That's them being moved because, and there is documentation.
And this is where the aerial photos will prove that they were moved or they've been gathered. We had complaints, that more stuff is...
There is documentation with the health department, you can, I'll give you his number and he come out and took pictures several times.
Well, the lot split, we're gonna table it.
The lot split, I can't do anything until those people get tired of telling me the ditch is crooked or there's too much gravel or there's this or there's that.
All right, let's do it one time. I'm gonna make a motion to the table, proceed forward with the lot split until next month.
Ask them how many times I've pulled them and how many times they can come out.
Is there a second to the motion?
No, I'll second it.
Roll call. Ben?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
This is a motion to table...
Table the lot split.
Lot split.
Table the prosecutor, move forward with the lot split violations because it's been a year.
I thought she said it hadn't been a year yet.
Has not been a year.
What are you talking about?
February.
Okay, can I ask you something? You said we're in violation of that by February? Okay, so are we being prosecuted or something about not having it done?
We're gonna table it until...
You're gonna table it until February?
Till next month.
Till next month?
Yes, I wanna talk to Brad Mercer and then...
Why next month when we have till February?
Find out why they're giving you trouble about the driveway.
With the lot split deal, are we in trouble now or February?
I don't think there was a one-year timeframe put on it.
Come the new year, I believe, is it the one year? I believe it's the one year, or come the new year, that variance is invalid because nothing was acted on it. So they've gotta do something prior to the year.
Something has been acted on it.
There is no notation in my books that I can present... There is no notation in my books that I can present to anyone.
I'll call, I'm gonna talk, I wanna talk to the, you know, to Brad Mercer.
Planning has it.
Planning, I will, I'll talk to him.
They've been out there several times. It's something different every time.
Right, alright.
So Jeff, what is your vote?
I'm gonna move to amend the motion to extend the date until the ex- actual expiration. We don't need to.
There was no expiration set.
One year.
No.
No.
You said one year.
There was no expiration set when they.
We just need to find out why.
Well, what is, explain this one year if you don't mind.
Prosecuting, prosecuting attorney said that after one year, the variance that was given is invalid. Because you have reasonable time and one year is beyond reasonable.
Okay, well, I remain, the same mo- amendment of the motion, I suggest that we don't proceed until the, that period of one year.
For the variance.
Well, you need to get the paperwork first.
We're gonna.
You can't do anything until that paperwork is here.
Well, the mo- right, the motion on the table is to proceed to next month, to table it till next month. I think we should table it until an appropriate time when it would actually be.
What, what brought it up right now? Somebody calling the prosecuting attorney and letting them know that they don't know anything that's going on?
The zoning inspector's report, I imagine, cause that's where I'm seeing it.
That's what I thought.
Because that's my job.
Yes.
You've got a lot more to do too.
Alright, well.
What about the violation?
Wait, wait.
No.
Well.
We, we have a motion on the table. We need to finish what we started. Please.
Sorry.
If nobody moves to amend, amend, to second the amendment.
Is there a second to amend the motion?
Then you go back to the original motion.
Okay.
Since there's no second, and if you don't mind, can you read what the motion is we're voting on?
Ben moved to table the lot split violation until next meeting. Dan seconded the motion.
Jenny, could you speak up? We can't hear you back here.
Okay, well, I guess next month we can just do it again and extend it again. So if you're ready for a roll call vote, we can move forward here.
I have everybody's vote but yours.
Yeah, we're waiting on.
I need your vote.
Yes.
Okay.
So basically you're putting it on the agenda for next month.
Correct.
That's basically all that just happened.
Yes, because I'm gonna talk to the planning commission, talk to Brad.
Put in the notes that I'm going to call Brad and I'm gonna tell him what happened at this meeting and that they've gotta get somebody out here. And they've gotta quit telling us about a ditch being crooked and all this other stuff so that I can get this done. Put that in the notes because I've called them enough.
I'll talk to them. So the second one is the operating, maintaining a junkyard, correct Bob?
Yes. It's been one year.
So what, if the pictures are different, then, then what happens?
If the pictures show that they removed some of the stacks that's already back there, that's good. That's showing they've done change. If it shows there's more, she's taken them to court. Because they haven't done anything except for add to it. So they're not, they're not working on the violation. They're ignoring the violation.
Let's table that.
So either the photos are gonna help them or it's not gonna do it.
Right, we, we already decided we're gonna do pictures, so.
Okay.
Let's table that till next month, put that on the agenda.
Are you making a motion to do that?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Ben has made a motion to table that, put it on the agenda. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Barb, Barb? You want that?
Yes. Roll call. Ben?
Yes.
Yeah, these are, these are first.
Yeah.
Dan?
Mr. Ford Penning, so he can have multiple copies.
Thank you. Are you doing a roll call?
Yes, I am.
Yes. Is that all you have for your report Barb?
Um, when I come to the next meeting, I will make sure I have the old photos and the new photos.
If we could have.
So you, the table can see it also. Okay? So yeah, it's out of there.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Do you remember the letter that we had that told us what we had to move? Do you remember that? Do you have a copy of that? Where it said our tractors, a sign, a car?
Yes, I remember that. It was worth it ten times.
Do you remember all those things?
I don't remember. I'll put it in my head now, but I, yes, I remember.
I know Jeff has a copy of it for sure. No one has ever told me, except saying, well, you got the violation, you got the. Why we have to move those things on that list and how those are a junkyard. How my tractors at the end, out in our field is a junkyard. How the car that's tagged and licensed, how that is a junkyard. And how the sign I have out there is a junkyard. And right down to my Mitt Romney signs had to be removed. That's against the Supreme Court.
I think the Board of Elections told you that, didn't they?
No, they told me I did not have to remove those and that was, took before the Supreme Court. That you, you as a township is illegal to tell a person they have to remove those. Now, which things on the list that we were given as violations do you want moved? No one has ever told me about.
That, that was a list. And the car, if you could produce, you know, that it has.
A tag on it.
Title.
It's got a title. It's got all of that. But somebody wrote that down without checking that, that this has to be moved.
Well, if you have this, you can say, look, here's this.
Why do I have to prove anything? That person needs to prove that it's a junk car. That's her job. Now, the other thing that, that, the, 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 uh, tractors, I was told, why don't you move them back up by the house? Why do I need to? It's my property. We use them to bail hay. Well, none of those run. Well, yes, they do. They all ran. I have witnesses. We had them all moved and lined up and we had an auction out there and we're selling some of them. They do move except for one out there that has a flag in it.
Excuse me, I haven't just not put it on the table for next month.
So, can you guys, can you guys move your tractors where you want them? On your property?
Refresh them, remember Barb? Do you remember what the rule was on this? What?
Now, when you look at that list, you tell me what needs to be moved.
I'll have to look at the list and we'll get back.
Okay, I want you to do that.
Very good. I know there was a ruling on that of what stated.
But I still don't know what the ruling was.
Why it had to be moved. Alright. Zoning appeals. Comprehensive plan. Port committee. Can I read it? Um, there was one pay rental in October for twenty-five dollars. November bookings. Um, we have the election. Their free rental for four days. There's an auction coming up on the ninth, an auction on the seventh, an auction luncheon on the ninth. Uh, a church bazaar on the twenty-third and then two rentals on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Uh, the next port committee meeting is November nineteenth. Here's the money for the one rental.
The next port meeting?
The nineteenth.
Next, next month.
Yeah, let me know if you wanna get those. There you go. Um, I'd said last meeting, I purchased some more tables for the community building. I was at Lowe's. They didn't have the same tables that matched ours, so I'm gonna look at another Lowe's. Uh, and then also check your home depot. I'd kinda like to get some stuff that all matches, so, um, I'll still get some tables. I just haven't gotten them. Um, under port committee. Kinda be under. Unfinished business, I guess, but brick, brick project was completed. Um, we had quite a good turnout to help do that. There was probably ten or twelve people that turned out that day. Um, September twenty-eighth to do that. So that's done. If anybody hasn't seen it, obviously it's around a flagpole. It's pretty good. Um, wanna thank everybody to come. Definitely wanna thank Tim. He kinda took a big part in that, so he, uh, he's putting all of the, all that stuff, so I thank him a lot. Then also we did the flag raising ceremony on October fifth. Um, went pretty well. I think we had about forty, forty-five people turn out for that. Um, wanna thank the American Legion, the post from County Line Road for coming down and helping us out with that. That's all I have on the port committee. Do you guys have anything? Jeff? Unfinished business. Rob Grant?
Yes, um, now that the road project has been completed, we need to turn in the receipt so that we can, so that, um, Ohio Public Works Commission can send out the letter or the check to Smalls for the work that they completed. And I need the project manager's signature. So that would be Jeff's. I need your signature on there at the top where, right above where your name is.
Okay, well, as a project manager on this, I have certain responsibilities. Uh, and if I sign this with the information I have right now, that would officially make me a rubber stamp. So in order to, uh, process this in a timely manner without any, uh, delay and to make sure they get paid properly. Uh, because I was, uh, not informed by either Smalls or the rest of this board or had communication of any of the scheduling, even though that's what the project manager's supposed to do. To make this easy, I move, uh, because Dan, I, I understand you were there. There's a lot of things in question. I haven't seen one, uh, slip on materials or anything, but. To make it easier, I just move at this point, uh, so you can get your signature, that, uh, Dan Dan Duran be assigned as the project manager on the remainder of this project.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Roll call. Ben?
No.
Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
You took the responsibility in being the project manager, Jeff. I think you should have been responsible for signing off on it.
I think we should have, uh, discussed that during, after the second before we voted on it, Ben.
I'm just telling my opinion.
You're entitled to your opinion.
You're right, I am.
I took the appropriate action so township could move.
Is that all we need on the road, Grant?
That's all.
Uh, next thing on the unfinished business is trash. Do you guys have any just, you wanna discuss with that? Any discussion?
I have a copy of the case. Last time I looked at it, the, uh, CMI company on the. Online, it says that they, I believe they received the, uh, paperwork. I think it says they have twenty-eight days to respond. Before any actions were moved forward.
Have you heard anything on that? Have you been in contact with Mr. Jack or anything?
I've been following it online from the time it became a case and had a case number. And that's all I have for you.
Here, I just need your signature. I didn't see that.
And I would request a copy of this, uh, form that, uh, is being submitted. Guess we'll have to do that at the end of the meeting as well, so I can take it home with me.
I'd like a copy of that also, please. Jenny, that's all right.
Yep.
Trying to make a copy, is it gonna get done there, Mike? New business. Nothing really happened. We discussed before about getting cinders.
Yeah, we discussed about getting cinders.
Get some time alone again.
We're gonna look to check them out.
Get cinders filled out. Is there anything left out of your place?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe give them their light is still dry. See what we need.
We're all living in the salt situation right now.
Ben's fool.
As far as our obligations, Jenny.
We purchased what we needed to purchase. For the last contract.
Is it Ben back?
We don't have any more room for anything else right now.
Guess we're gonna fill the, Ben's filling the bucket full of charred.
I don't have anything else on the new business. Anything, Jenny?
No.
Jeff?
Yeah, I just had a question for you. I was contacted by the state auditor. Understand I have some issues again in the last draft audit and information back and. From what I understand, I read an email after the fact, but understand you have a special meeting. Could you elaborate on what, what that was about?
It was just a meeting with the auditor to sign the final paperwork and get my records back.
And we have received them back.
Yes. And the full audit is online, not the auditor.
The draft version is not online. Uh, I finally did receive a copy of that. Under, I had requested it from you in the future. As I've always asked for, when the draft audit comes, I appreciate a copy of it. Because that's not public record.
Wasn't attached to that email?
And what goes on, it was attached to the email I got a few days ago. I'd like to see it before it goes from draft to final. That's the point of checks and balances. So, if you don't mind, next year, I'd like to get.
It won't be next year. It'll be two years from now. And I probably won't remember, so you'll have to ask me again.
I certainly will put it on my calendar, because I think it's important that every trustee sees the audits and the potential things that, that, uh. Yeah, I would think you'd welcome that in order to make sure that everything is done correctly.
Were you contacted by the auditor when the audit started?
No.
Yes, you were. Yes, you received an email that asked if you had anything that they wanted to look into further. Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
I received the email that had you tagged on it, Jeff.
I did not receive such an email.
Yes, you did.
Ben, I'd appreciate if you not tell me what I have or have not received.
I'm telling you.
If I had that email, I would have seen the draft immediately when it was available to see.
Where's the checks and balances?
Appreciate if we can finish up the meeting professionally tonight.
Give me a minute. You guys have any other new business? Nope. Um, I do have one, I think. Uh, I'll request a copy from you, Jeff, of the, um, the final finished up letter that you had sent to the Energy Co-op. To Margie Klein, uh, everything that you had sent to her.
I already provided you with that. I made copies.
I'm asking you for a copy.
I already provided you and everyone else with that and everyone on the port committee with that.
I'd like to have a copy of everything that you sent to her. So if you could have that.
I've already provided you with that.
I'm asking.
Jenny should also have it.
I'm asking you for a copy of everything that you sent.
You need it again. If this copier works, I'll get my, my copies of it and make you another copy.
Yes, please. I'd like to have everything that you sent to her.
You have already received it.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move on to public comment.
Back here, Ben.
Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, Jeff had been calling me when Barb had his own paper that, uh, uh, he wanted to see the letter from the prosecutor. He said that, uh, it should be present for all the board members to view. Well, you know, I think if I'm not mistaken, uh, tonight's three months since he's been here, he hasn't been here tonight. Then what would he done in six months? Brought it up that he didn't see it. And also I wanna make a comment about the agenda. It was Jeff, Dan, Jack, Jack Edges, Donnie Watkins, the amount of their checks. And I have a question why Jeff is higher than all the other guys that's actually going to work? Is there a reason for that? He hasn't been here in three months and I, you know, it just don't seem right, does it?
Well, I appreciate your concern. I can answer the question. I mean, if you wanna ask Jeff directly, you can ask him directly.
Did you answer that, Jeff, why your checks higher?
Why my checks higher than the others? It has to do with the, uh, taxes and deductibles and things taken out like any other employer. That's why it's gonna vary a little bit. Each trustee is compensated the same.
Could I get a copy of all that to see if that's accurate?
The official officer would have that information.
Okay, I'd like to see a copy of that, Jenny, if I could, please.
Okay.
See if it's taking another type of shit, if that's anything.
I have nothing to do with the, the set wage. That's all set in the Ohio Revised Code. Compensation of trustees is based on the percentage of budget and all three are the same.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I got something I want.
Go ahead. If you want to. Go ahead.
Okay, um, the stop, um, elections, uh, so. My understanding in zoning, we've got two weeks to pull after, um, after election over, what is it? Two weeks? Hold them up for twenty-four hours. Two weeks?
It's two weeks, I think it is.
Yeah.
In the Bowling Green Township.
Yeah, it's probably in the zoning. So, I mean, you know, I don't know what you can say. I probably wanted, people must want the zoning in, so it's in. so it's in, now you gotta be happy about it, so.
We do.
So if it's in, you gotta follow the rules. But it does state that, I mean, it's been there ever since I was on the zoning committee. So, I mean, you know, I don't know, you guys don't want zoning, best thing to do is get people and get the zoning down, or otherwise, just, I don't know what.
Can I answer that?
Do you have a complaint or something?
No, she is stating, she stated, it is lovely comment, but she stated earlier that, you know, she can keep her, um, camp- campaign signed up. I really don't care, she's got fifty years. But I do know in the zoning itself, it does, um, that everybody has the signs up in two weeks.
Yeah, can I answer that?
Go ahead.
He missed, he missed the point, I gave you guys letters from the Supreme Court saying that a township cannot do that. You are illegal to have that in the resolution, and there has been people take that before the Supreme Court.
I'm sorry, I haven't seen that.
I'm not saying that.
I haven't seen that.
And they're not up now, that if I wanted them up-
They're my friends.
I could put them up. It's against, against the Supreme Court.
See, you're missing everything.
All right, all right, all right.
The point you're missing is that it is against the law for the township to do that, against the Supreme Court. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
To enforce the zoning rules, I, I, I don't know.
To enforce that rule. That is, that is, uh-
What was elected, what do you call that?
Free speech, that, that is, that's against the law. Against the law. Now, I might put them back up and say God loves Mitt Romney, and then it'll be a, it'll be a religious sign. Okay?
Thank you, Ron.
There's the answer to that, look it up on the website, on the internet. Ron, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I'm really sorry that people twisted it. You don't have to apologize for me.
All right, we're gonna move on, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to say they did a good job on Somerset Road, but what dictate where your driveway got an apron or not to? I got a three-inch drop dropping into my driveway.
Anything that dropped should have got sloped, it wasn't sloped.
It didn't slope mine a lot, so, ever.
We'll, we'll come up, take a look at it, if we got a little bit. Yeah, if we got a little bit of, yeah, grinding or something in there, we can do that, so.
Still gotta do something that's ditched.
But we, I had another call on something, you know, where they didn't slope, most of them are, they took the roll and sloped them, so.
Yeah, they did do a good job before paving.
Well, we appreciate it.
Uh, I have to work with him on the right, uh, on that dress, I don't know if I'm gonna have it on the right.
And that's what your home will find, I think.
They had probably five inch top off. All right, any other public comment?
I have a question. Go ahead, sir. Uh, last month we were told that someone was gonna come up, take a look at the weeds and stuff, the ditches running along the south side of our property. Nobody showed up, also, the trees running down Bowling Green Street, that's an east-west street, that, you know, into the street.
I did, I did drive up in there, I drove the one, the truck up in there. I need to trim the, the branches, because they hit the mirror, but other than that, I didn't have any trouble.
It's been five months.
But what about?
No, I was up there when Tim, Tim brother was with me.
But it's been five months since someone has come up and I've been requested that being done. This is the fifth one. And Stan, you promised us that that would be done within two weeks.
I make any promises.
But you did.
I went up there and looked at it, I drove, Tim, Tim was with me.
Yep.
And, uh, they hit on the mirrors.
It does.
But I drove that, the big truck up there and turned around in the driveway and come back out, and that's, that's the only trouble I had, is it hitting on the mirror.
But what about all the weeds that are up above there and the deuces up above there?
They're blocking water.
South of the property, blocking the water, fall, that comes down from Beach Street and up above Beach Street, because they're not clear. They got six feet of weeds in there again, and the last person that came up there and cleaned it out was Jeff Corpen.
Seems to know what it's doing, did a good job, so.
Yeah.
Waters.
Mm-hmm.
Do we call that?
Why did you reroute the water out Beach Street instead of running down across that ditch? And that would solve the problem.
It's a natural water way doesn't do that.
Yeah.
But it is only if they keep it clean, if you don't keep the dishes cleaned out, and I mean, there was money there years ago, and two and three years ago, to keep those deuces clean, what happened to the damn money, where is it now? Why can't we get the dishes cleaned out now?
We're talking about money, there's money there.
Yeah, I mean, the money was there, you guys got paid to clean out those dishes two and three years ago.
You can clean out your two or four stuff, you threw it in there, weren't you?
There's no stuff, I'm talking about up above us, there's nothing thrown in there.
Richie, that's Richie Bowles, he's just full of snakes and he run clear to home.
I can't, I can't have anything to do with snakes. I don't have anything to do with snakes.
Richie, run.
All right, well, you took a look at the trees and you took a drive over the shrubs.
Yeah.
I think a lot of top of the block. That's probably.
Yeah, they, they did hit the mirrors when I drove in.
They scratched the cars.
I don't know how wide that street is up there.
Uh, what the actual right of way is, I, I don't know, I can find out.
Sixteen half foot?
It probably is, I, I could call tomorrow and find out.
Bob, I, I got one question, please, on this, uh, let's get Bob's towing debacle. Is, now, when these cars, I got registrations to and tagged on them, now, any other car in the complete township and county is setting, will have to have a registration and tags brought into you and shown to you. What I bring in mind, than any other car setting, you're gonna, if I hear this car setting, you're gonna spring it in and show it to the public.
There's certain criteria that it has to meet.
Like what?
Barb, off top we had, do you know what the three criteria are for a junk car?
I never did anything on a junk car with them, but I do want to make one comment.
There was a car at the end of the lane that white car.
We never ever did anything on a junk vehicle on him.
No, you did.
Okay, um, they never received any record on a junk vehicle. You had junk meetings, at no point in time was her address ever brought up. Now, I do have one statement, because this is on public record, it's on recording all over the place. He just stated he has a business, that's one of the things he's in violation for, he is not allowed to have a business.
There's no rule like that.
There is a rule, he is not allowed to have a business where he is at, he is not grandfather. Well, read the zoning.
Time will tell. I want some forms, I want some papers to fill out.
So everybody in the township, whether they're, you know, no matter what, they can't have a business?
No, there's designated areas.
As long as he's not alter, if, if he's just saying, you know, Bob's painting, that's a business.
One of his violations is he has a bunch of scraps and junk, and he had at one point in time massive amounts of junk vehicles that he has been towing off roads and bringing up there. He did at one point in time remove these, not all of them, okay? In the agricultural district, you are not allowed to have a business unless it's agricultural.
Well.
Prior to zoning, if you had it, prior to zoning, if you had that business.
No, that's not true.
That isn't his grandfather.
The way, the way I understand it is, you can have a business, I'll pay any business, whatever, but you can't have somebody come to your house and do business at your house.
You cannot bring in vehicles and stuff and having a scrap yard either. That is a violation, we do not have a scrap yard in our zoning, it is a violation.
So making the statement that you can't have a business is not accurate, that's-
That, yeah, that's not true, um, and, and they went as far some time ago saying we couldn't even have parts for her vehicles on our property.
Uh, it's here, so I don't know.
Containing a junk vehicle, Jimmy White is in that one.
When we get back to my-
No, go ahead, get my Bob's car, go ahead.
Yes, sir, now, any automobiles-
Quiet down.
If any automobiles that are sitting in this township, the person that owns this automobile is gonna have to bring you registrations, and the public is going to know this.
If there's a call to the board or the zoning inspector.
Oh, no, wait, hold.
No, wait a minute, there should not have to be a call, it's, 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 the zoning inspector is only going after two people in there all the time.
That's not true.
There is many, 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 many people in here that has cars sitting in their driveways that have tags.
Are you gonna go on the first? Okay, there is a call, she will do a follow-up, if it meets certain criteria, it's your, what violation, if you can prove that, that it does not meet those criteria.
How will I prove it if I don't, no, they don't bring it in their papers?
Who, who else do we have?
So nobody calls her, it's legal, and if somebody calls her, it's legal.
Do you have a complaint about a car?
People-
Not just how-
If you have a complaint about a junk vehicle, make it.
She only goes after people that the neighbor calls on all the time.
No, sir, no, sir.
Nobody else.
No, sir, I'm not complaining, but my automobile is not a junk vehicle, it's a nineteen seventy-three Pontiac LeMans. It's a car, it runs, it drives, and I have tags on it.
Okay.
But it's on that list to be removed as a violation, it's on that list.
Well, if it did not meet the criteria, a junk motor vehicle would be taken off that list.
But it hasn't, has never, I've never got anything saying that these things are taken off, they're all still-
They're bringing the list in or crossing off.
Violations.
Well, Stan, yours was simple, you should have that, just bring in the schedule, get a picture of the registration on the car.
That's what we asked for.
Ben?
No, we asked for it.
Ben, I don't think you make that statement that you can bring it up, that vehicle, you should be talking about.
All right, all right. If you guys excuse me, you brought, you brought in the registration, we saw that, nobody pursued that any further.
Ben, what I'm trying to say is, I was told that the only time she goes after anybody is if somebody complains. So everybody else that has all the same, could have the same things, and they're okay, they're legal.
That's not true.
But it is, because we're the, just a couple of us are the only ones, and it's because our neighbor complains continuously.
If there's a complaint made to me, this board is gonna get followed up on.
Is there, is there a form that needs to be filled out for all these complaints?
No.
Okay, 'cause we've got a neighbor around the corner that's holding illegal stuff according to what his business is, and nobody ever does a thing to him, and somebody's real close to that person.
And we, and we don't, we don't ask, you know, we don't put out names or anything like that.
We all know they are, I've said it many times.
There's four people in this neighborhood that's grandfathered in with a truck and a-
Well, he ain't grandfathered in to do what you're doing.
All right, did I answer your question about the car? You, you brought the registration all out there before.
Why does he have to do that unless everybody else has to do that?
Everybody else have to do it too?
No, you brought the registration and it shows-
Why do I have to do it?
Because it was on the list.
Why was it on the list?
And you brought it in to prove.
But why was it on the list?
Barb, 'cause it was not moved, it had been not moved. It is still-
I don't want to do this to my neighbors, but I'll have to.
Why was that car on the list instead of somebody looking and seeing that there was tags on it?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna come on your property personally and walk over and look at this little sticker that I made.
It's right by the road.
That white car.
The car's right by the road.
And you can see an inch and a half sticker.
Why did the person put that on the list?
Use it to cover up the ditch.
If you don't move it, then it's, it's sense.
It just does.
Do you move it?
No.
Why do I have to move it? Because that is what law. It must be legal.
No, that's if it's in town itself. Now, that zoning, that's everywhere.
That's the zoning.
The junk vehicle is everywhere, but that's not what they're on. They have never received a junk vehicle.
All right, all right.
Now, if, maybe if you have a second car that you just leave it sit there for weeks at a time without driving it, then it's illegal?
No, there's a certain amount of time with it.
Yes.
I, what's happening?
I, I, I don't have my book on it today.
It's two years, two years, it's a while.
But I can give you, husband, everything according to it.
Okay.
This is unbelievable.
All right, any other public comment?
Yeah, I'm gonna move to a, I'm, I'm gonna move to another country.
Jeff? Quiet down.
I have a question as to why Lawyer's Road was blacktop and patched that way instead of using chip seal. I mean, was there a reason, 'cause I don't understand, that's a lot more money.
You can't smooth out a, you, you can chip and seal over a rough road, you got a rough, chipped and sealed road.
But that was expensive.
If you chip and seal.
Chip and seal.
Yeah, but you, you, how are you gonna fix it?
My question is where did the money come from, I, it, to me, I'd love to have blacktop in front of my road, but they chip and seal it, I'm on the count.
Right, we spend seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars a year on road maintenance, the guys were out, we actually got a price break because they were out that way. If you take a road, if you take a road, chip and seal, let's bust it up into chunks, which it was, and you chip and seal over that, in a month, it's gonna be chunks again.
Yeah.
Okay, if you blacktop over that, it's gonna hold.
He says he didn't want it because of people now, because Somerset Road is closed, they're flying up and down that road now.
We're just trying to make it easier to maintain and work on.
It's gonna hold, so now, a couple of years from now, when we tar and chip it, we're gonna tar it, chip it over to blacktop, now it'll hold.
That's all I wanted to know, I just wondered why they had blacktop.
Any other public comment?
Ben?
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to make it part of public record that when Friends of Bowling Green Township hosted to meet the candidates tonight, we checked with Barb and there was no other reservations for that night. However, it was posted on Facebook on the Bowling Green Township volunteers webpage, that we actually bumped a paying customer from that night, and that they did not get to use that building. Uh, I checked with Barb and she assured me that there were only two reservations during that entire month, and they were both on a Saturday, and there was no one had reserved it that night.
Oh, another thing on meet that candidate, Ben and I did not have nothing to do with that.
No.
Setting it up.
No, all five candidates received a letter.
I, I received a letter in the mail. I didn't have, we didn't have nothing to do with that.
No, all five candidates received a letter, they were all sent the same day, they were sent to the address that was on from the Board of Elections, and only two candidates bothered to show up.
Well, there was no contact information on it, and, uh, if you'd called me, I had a charity auction in Columbus, so I couldn't be there.
I probably got the same letter you got, guarantee.
Yeah, I-
And, and they didn't ask me what a good night was, but you know what, I made it work.
I couldn't, I had already made, I have previous engagements, and was not able to do this, to do it, so that's my, but I had nobody to call. No information on there, and it was like, well, who am I supposed to call? I mean, you, nobody sends out a letter like that.
Well, no, I know nobody, but see, the thing is, even working for the township, when we gotta go out and work for them, we don't have to call nobody, we're supposed to be there to do the job. You know?
That wasn't a job, I, I might have to have a job.
I know, but if I have, when we have to go out at any time, don't make any difference.
Jeff's never showed up since he's been in office.
All right, all right, we got a couple more, real quick, go ahead, Dave.
And I'd like to thank everyone who come out tonight, is a, get out here tonight, and see everybody should make it out, and, uh, like I say, don't forget to vote.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
I'm just going to ask, do you know who, what's on, who has control of that website, who responded about the Facebook page?
Which one?
A friend of his, Gary. They're still born out of New Jersey, Cole Yonkins, that's the only ones that'll put their names, well, Gary Steph started putting his name on there.
Excuse me, I put my name on there.
Always put his name on there.
Oh, you did?
On the Facebook page?
Must be missing.
It must be missing.
Yes, he must be there. It's his.
Set up by Jeff Corpen.
I did set that up, that's a non-governmental website, so it's a non-issue, it has nothing to do with the business of the township from the board of trustees.
But there seems to be a lot of lies posted on that Facebook. It might not have nothing to do, everybody posts everything on it, and he puts his own opinion, whether it be right or wrong. It's his personal opinion. And we were highly attacked.
It's an open, it's an open forum, it's not a closed forum, so there's no control over who says what.
Say anybody, I don't know, anybody can post on there, I've never seen anybody can post on it.
If it doesn't stay whatever you request or something, it, it'll be deleted if Jeff doesn't want it.
If they, if they mean to be negative, you'll be taken off fair and fair.
Last time I checked, there were five or six different Bowling Green Township related Facebook pages, if you do a search, you'll see it's back. And there are no official board or township government Facebook pages.
More well, they've come and off.
It's different when you're trustee.
If you do that, then you have, uh, kind of things you're talking about now become serious issues, and you better do it right.
Marc, I got it.
And it was brought up at the last meeting for the zoning person, you know, whether the board that might purchase or something. The price on Good Self phone in there at Walmart is thirty-nine ninety-nine. If you get the thirty-minute card, thirty-dollar card, I'm sorry, do you get a thousand?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, there's people talking here.
I couldn't hear Jeff was talking, I'm sorry.
Uh, at the last meeting, it was brought up for the zoning person that perhaps maybe she buy her, the board buy her her phone. And they do have a nice phone, it's an LG phone, and it's at Walmart, and you can get, it's thirty-nine ninety-nine plus tax. You get a thirty-dollar card, you get a thousand minutes, which we never used ours in a month's time. It's thirty dollars a month, and I think it'd be well worth for having a phone of her own, I, I really believe that the board should buy her a phone. There's unlimited tax, and she'll have her own phone, and, and people can't complain that, you know, she's doing anything wrong. I think she should have her own phone.
It's thirty dollars a month?
Thirty dollars a month, plus the phones, thirty-nine ninety-nine.
Well, we're, we're actually paying less than that right now for it, we're actually paying twenty-five a month.
Twenty-five, but, but it's personal.
Right.
I can, can you guys buy them?
Yeah, we want to be public, right?
And we're, we're paying less than that, I don't.
Five more dollars, but. If, if, if.
I have a, 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 before you guys do.
And if we are gonna do that.
It's something you'd ask for at this meeting before you do a search. The log we would see from her would be her work, you know, with her time sheet, so, I mean, you can use it as a log.
Right, Jeff.
Yeah, you do. You have access, it's public record, if you want it. Her work, her time sheet, we can give you a copy of that.
Well, it's not just for me, it's for anybody that wants.
Sure, that's public record.
If she had her own phone, that, you know, I think it'd be great. Then she wouldn't have to mix that with her personal phone. That's only the smart thing, really, to do.
Well, we're paying less than that now, so, I mean, I don't.
We asked about that before, about giving her a, and that really is, I agree, that's a very.
I think it's, I think it's a, an excellent idea in that way. Right now, the prosecuting attorney, which you stated at the last meeting, said that that was her personal information.
Right.
Anything that has to do with a township meeting where people are involved and a board's involved is public record.
Sure.
So, if she's wanting to have her own, then a law, national law of the call she makes and who, how long she's talking. But if she has her own phone, we can't check into that. You can chuck her, no laws, just her phone card.
You know, and I'm not sticking up for Barb, but there's a lot of things, you know, we don't pay for her internet. You know, she provides that, but she uses it for the township. We don't pay for her home office.
But, but that's on her phone though.
So, I mean.
If she, if she has her own phone.
I, I don't, we can discuss this, I mean.
Will you put internet on it?
Discussing it, man.
It has internet on it. It has.
For thirty dollars, you can get internet unlimited.
Bob and I both have LG phones, and all my kids have.
Unlimited internet, I'm just asking.
You get all your, thirty dollars a month.
Okay.
And your phone, yeah, I think it's like three or four dollars for the insurance. If you drop your phone, you send it in, you can get another one replaced free. And it's an upgraded model.
Can we tell you until next week? I'll look at it, look online, and see what they cost and all that stuff, see if I get any specs on them, any good specs.
LDG, right?
LG.
It's an LG, yeah. They have different plans, you can get different plans, but they're really nice phones.
Do you have to buy like a card every month?
Yes.
Something you put in the phone.
You can buy it right online, it should be good. Everybody has access, most everybody does access the internet now. You can buy it right online.
Prepaid card.
Gotcha.
Yeah, they just all prepaid cards.
It'd be like Deuce Mobile or.
Gotcha.
I, I haven't heard from the committee that was going to rebuild Brownsville and Bowling Green Township. Has anybody got done anything?
What's that, what do you mean?
We're gonna bring all kinds of new things here, and, do you have a committee? One day in here, they're gonna review it.
The company?
You don't have that committee?
Huh? Like the planning committee?
Yeah, they were gonna make Brownsville and Bowling Green Township come alive. What happened after that?
I'm not sure.
What we've been told is nobody wants to live here because of how bad everything looks, but that, that ain't the reason, let me tell you. There ain't nothing here.
What looks bad, that's all.
Ben, we don't really live in a dark age, just they don't need to help walk around here.
Well, there's nothing we can do about that, we can't.
Well, I was talking, but there is. Uh, we've talked to Kevin Eby, and we've talked to the manager, water manager in Jamesville, the one that brought the line gray shot. And yes, there is, there's a lot that we can do about it.
See, now you're crossing counties, going from this kingdom to the other.
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference, because half of gray shots are in our county.
More of that.
Yeah.
Inside the room is, yeah.
And, and the Jamesville manager, that was over the water, uh, management system there, he told us that if people wanted them here, that we could get it here. It's just a matter of wanting it.
That's it, it's a matter of wanting it. If people want it, we can discuss it.
And the person that we needed to talk to, he used to live here, right in the street right in front of me, but it's Kevin Eby. He's over the, he's over the water business, I think he's handling it.
I don't know who that is.
Well, it's, it's, it's Kevin Eby, he used to live right in front of me.
Oh yeah, I know the apartment. Yeah, yeah, I know the house you're up next to.
He's over, he's manager there, he's the management now.
I can ask him, I can call down there, say, do you guys have any forecasted plans to do anything? You know, just kinda see what their projections.
I have all the information, I have four patents of information on it, if you'd like to have it, I'll be glad to send it to you.
Sure, sure.
We'll bring it in.
That's fine, definitely, yeah. I mean, if that's something people want, we can look into it. I, I don't know if it happens a lot, I, I don't.
Yeah.
We do, they would see government funding to do that down there. Right, they're gonna do their own system. They decided not to do it.
Well, the reason why we called Kevin was because gray shot, water wells, and a lot of the systems, which are in the big engine, same as here.
Yes.
Have parts and stuff.
Right, right. And that's why they, they made them do away with them.
Yep.
Exactly. Go ahead, Bob.
I gotta say this, I've been here forty years. To me, it's one of the best communities I ever lived in. I used to live in the South. That was a nightmare. And you people over there, everybody else complaining about Bowling Greens, it's a bunch of buggers. I raised my kids here, they raising their kids here, and to me, I don't have a problem with Bowling Greens. I got problems with people sometimes.
You have an income.
But wait a minute, I'll listen to you, you listen to me. And I didn't mean to interrupt you. Now, I'm just stating, I'm so sick of everybody cutting Bowling Green Township down. No, we're, I think we're great people. Now, if you people don't like it, find somewhere else, go. That's the best thing I can say.
All we wanna do is be able to pay our bills.
No, you just want some money.
We haven't started to do other things against us.
Alright, alright. Is there any other public comment from anybody? Go ahead.
I have a comment on that deal there. I, I lived in Pickerton in nineteen eighty-one when there was nothing out there. It would take me, to get from my house to the freeway, it took me four minutes, and now it takes you forty minutes.
That's right.
So if you guys wanna sit on forty in a traffic jam, yeah, you can have all McDonald's and stuff. Yeah, you're right.
Look what works out.
You guys are missing the point. We have to be able to pay our bills.
See, bud. Alright, is that it for public comment? Nobody else?
I make sure we should pay bills.
First check is forty, we have a six hundred twenty dollars eighty-one cents. Four three one seven, Mark Salie, two eighty-two. Four three one six, Page Man C up, six twenty-two, eighteen. Four three one five, Jack Richards, seven two seven six. Four three one one, Miles Combinator, fifty-eight thirty. Four three one zero, El Recycle, fifty-eight dollars, six hundred and seventy.
Thanks, David, you did a good job on the payments, you guys, thanks.
One nine, Michael Blackhead, five five eight five sixty-four.
I'm sure, Dan, I'm happy.
Four three one two, Gosh of Flight Company, four one thirty-four. I'm not kidding. Four three two zero, Smalls House, fourteen, forty-six thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars, ninety-seven cents. Four three two two, Mark Salie, one fifty-three twenty-eight. Four three two one, Honor of State, eight hundred thirty dollars, ten cents.
No, we'll get up, we gotta, we gotta.
Is this what you were talking about, you have?
Four three one three, Jeffrey Corpenney, six twenty-two eighty-nine.
Got that done, Dan?
What is that man's name? Chin and balls, so. But I was wanting, I was wanting to tell him, but he got away, that if it wasn't for us, he wouldn't have.
Is that the last one?
Or you know.
Four three fourteen, ten, they're all in ninety-seven.
Is there any, uh, do you?
I'm not, did you?
I'll second it, where's the, uh?